Okay, it is now 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Perfect timing. Alderman Martinez.
Here, I.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
I'm present.
Alderman Donowitz.
I'm present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a call, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Tonight, the invocation will be given from Pastor Bishop Anthony Johnson from After the Fall Ministry here in Waukegan. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
My pleasure. Heavenly Father, we come before thy throne with thanksgiving and praise, thanking you for allowing us to be assembled here once again to serve you and the people of Waukegan. We thank you for the members of the Waukegan City Council and ask that they may be blessed and led by your spirit as they make decisions to make the city of Waukegan a better and safer place to live in. We pray that you would give the members of the Waukegan City Council the wisdom, understanding, and a humbleness of heart to fulfill your purpose for this city. We pray that you would give them ears to hear the voice of the people that elected them to the seats where they are seated now. May their decisions be unbiased and their motives pure of heart. We pray for the first responders of the city of Waukegan, the Waukegan Police Department, Fire Department, and hospital staff in the surrounding areas. May they be blessed and kept safe as they fulfill your will and purpose in serving the people of Waukegan. These requests we lay before your altar, believing by faith that they shall be answered in accordance to your will and purpose. May God bless the city of Waukegan and its residents in Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 3rd Waukegan City Council meeting. Hard to believe, but summer is officially here. So, we started off this weekend celebrating with the Waukegan Pride Parade by Waukegan Friends. And while it was rainy, I'm telling you, the commitment to celebrating and embracing the city's diversity was absolutely fantastic. We had, you know, not a ton of people out, but those that were out were so committed to this, and believe me, it was pouring, but it was so much fun. For those of you who don't know, Waukegan Police Officer Brian Faladico, the School Resource Officer at Waukegan High School East, has been named a winner of the Bridge the Gap Award from the National Association of School Resource Officers. This is, believe me, one of the biggest honors. There are very few chosen. He'll receive his award in July at the conference in Phoenix. And as you know, our police department is one of the hardest-working police departments in Lake County, and I'm so proud of one of our officers to be recognized for this. In May, I was pleased to join the Conference of the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. The conference aims to build a roadmap towards sustainability, prosperity, by fostering innovative green initiatives. It is to secure our water supplies all the way from Canada, all the way around the Great Lakes. This year, we were asked to be hosts, and it was truly a wonderful conference. We learned a lot. We learned a lot about sustainability, shipping, everything on our lakefront. Waukegan Public Works and the Waukegan Water Department will conduct a community-wide hydrant flushing, which I'm sure some of you have already seen. We started off in the ninth ward around right before Memorial Day weekend, and we're continuing it through all of the wards. One of the things, when you see the sign, please hold off doing your laundry until evening time, because it can cause a temporary discoloration of your laundry and lower water pressure. If any of you have ever had yellow laundry because of hydrant flushing, you'll know what I'm talking about, but please just hold off until the evenings and you'll be fine. Once the flushing is complete in your area, run your tap water a little bit, because again, you'll even see that it can be a little yellow, and just run it for about three to five minutes, and then just resume all your normal activities. For those of you who haven't noticed, we've had a ton of rain lately, and including tonight, it's supposed to rain again, which means our lawns and weeds are growing leaps and bounds. I'm asking you, please, to take care of your lawn. We are siding for people when it's over eight inches high, but also take some time to do some weeding and make our community proud. Make your home look good. And again, we have the eight-inch ordinance, so take the time, do it right, do your parkways. Last week, I was pleased to join the Waukegan Township at the Eddie Washington Center for its 2024 graduation ceremony at the Eleanor Murkey Center. For those of you who are not aware of the Eddie Washington program that's offered through Waukegan Township, please take an opportunity to learn about it, and what a great program it is and how lucky we are that our township does this. The Waukegan Fire Department's looking for new hires. We officially went live today. Applicants must be at least 20 years old and less than 35 years old at the time of the written exam. For more information, you can contact the Fire Department. Applications, like I said, are open today. I think that we have, again, one of the best fire departments here in Lake County, and I want to thank the chief of, the fire chief, for all the leadership that he brings to that department. But what I'd love to see is more and more people apply from our community. I'd like to see some women apply, and so take the opportunity to look at the application and put one in. And again, the opening started today. The Waukegan, the city of Waukegan's looking at tearing down some of the dilapidated properties, so you might notice that we are taking certain permits out in the next few weeks. Again, it's just looking at properties that need to be cleaned up and have needed to be cleaned up for a long period of time, so you'll start to see some changes. Lastly, there's lots and lots of events going on through the summer in our city. Please take the opportunity to go to www.waukeganil.gov/calender, and that'll give you a listing of all of the things happening in our community. Please take advantage of it, look at some of the things. The other thing is, many of you like to do block parties. Make sure you get those block party applications in at least 30 days prior to your event. And when I say "at least," if you can get them in a couple of months in advance, that's even better. We get busy during the summer months, and it helps if our Public Works Department knows ahead of time and our police department knows when these block parties are going to be. If you are requesting the Fire Department come or the Police Department come with a canine dog, the sooner you get those applications in, the better chance you have of having those at your block party. That concludes my mayor's comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. The next two items are proclamations. It's up to you if you'd like me to read those. I don't know if there's individuals here for those two.
There's no individuals here. We'll just read them into the record.
All right, will do. Proclamation: June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month in Waukegan, whereas every day, 91 Americans are killed, shot, or wounded by gun violence; and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries; and whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities; and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the city of Waukegan's highest responsibility; and whereas the city of Waukegan and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, in our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe; and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, an increase in city gun violence; and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of the City of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby declare June as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and we encourage all citizens to support the local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives adopted this third day of June 2024. Our second proclamation is June is Men's Health Month in Waukegan, whereas Men's Health Month is part of an ongoing international effort to educate men, boys, and their families about receiving regular disease prevention screenings and living healthier lifestyles; and whereas nationwide, life expectancy for men averages five years fewer than that of women, with men experiencing higher rates of health problems such as diabetes, obesity, cancer, heart disease, and premature mortality; and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had a devastating impact on men's health in the United States, dropping men's life expectancy by two years; and whereas Men's Health Month is a time for the public to recognize the mental and physical health needs of men and boys while encouraging fathers to be role models for their children through preventative health screenings, healthy living, and seeking needed help; and whereas the growing epidemic of suicide and substance abuse requires special effort to raise awareness of unrecognized and undiagnosed depression and mental stress in boys and men; and whereas the centerpiece of Men's Health Month is Nation Men's Health Week, a particular awareness period passed by Congress and signed into law by President Bill Clinton on May 31, 1994. And now therefore be it resolved Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim the month of June as Men's Health Month in Waukegan, Illinois, adopted this third day of June 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Quickly, as we're getting the names for audience time, I will say that this Friday from 5:00 to 7:30, the Boys and Girls Club is having a march for against gun violence, and it's down at the Boys and Girls Club here in Waukegan. Going on to audience time, Madam Clerk?
Absolutely. We're going on to audience time. I'm going to call the first five people. Go ahead and go to the east side of the room, line up, be prepared to do your three minutes, which you're allowed. In addition, state your name. First will be Mr. Rayon Edwards, Audra Flores, Fakwa Khan, Yasenia Reese, and Brother Blanks. Mr. Rayon Edwards, Aurora Flores, Fakwa Khan, Yasenia Reese, and Brother Blanks. Ready when you are, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, Council, Aldermen, community, mayor. As I'm looking at this agenda today, I see the proclamations. I see the gay flags up, and I represent that community, but I don't see not one Juneteenth flag up. That's an issue for me. We know that Juneteenth starts June 1, and this is the first meeting on the month. There's no reason why you got that flag up there and not that Juneteenth flag. That's disgusting. Alderman Bolton, dear, I'm going to address you tonight because I want to have a conversation with you. We have a stop sign on McAllister, right there in front of Brother Blanks' building, a flash and stop sign. For what? Who put that there? We don't have mounds of kids walking that way. We don't even have mounds of kids going into that building, but we got a school right up the street, and I don't know if you noticed, but the fence been hit today. And see, I see that because I walk down that street every single day. And maybe he got the sign because he come up here to speak, and that makes you guys nervous, but I want that sign removed and put in front of that school where it needs to be, because that's where our babies are at. And when we do something on that block, let's try to go stop and talk to Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson has been on that corner for many years, and she understands that community and watches those kids every single day. I'm going to talk about this special thing that we got up here where we trying to censor Alderman. That is disgusting to me, and I'm going to tell you why. I don't support him. I don't always agree with him, at all. And just so everybody clear, I'm supporting Sam Cunningham this time for mayor, so we can get that out the way, right? But when you get to censoring an Alderman, you are taking away these people's voice. This gentleman is set up here, and I done seen them do a whole lot of ignorant things, a whole lot of things that's unbecoming of an Alderman, and ain't none of y'all ever said anything or ever tried to censor him. But now because he's challenging this mayor, we are using city resources and time to play politics, to play political games. Ain't none of y'all never tried to censor him before with some of the things that he's done, but all of a sudden, we going to do this. So I got a job for y'all tonight. The Palestine community has been coming to every meeting asking for a ceasefire, but we can't give them that. But y'all want to try to cater to a Milwaukee family about a picture that was posted, and if y'all done watched the news, that picture was on every news in just about every newspaper. So when I seen it on this page, the first question I asked myself was, where did he get that picture from? You talking about the police being the greatest in Waukegan? Well, I beg to differ, because in Barwell, I got a young lady over there with nine bullet holes in her house. She wasn't at home. I called the police. They sitting across the street in the empty way and just sitting there. They didn't move. I waited 19 minutes for them to come, and the only reason why they came is because I called your deputy chief. So I disagree that they great.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you. Mr. Audra, no, Aurora Flores?
Ceasefire for the Palestine community.
You can start right now.
Hello, my name is Aurora Flores. I'm a lifelong resident of Waukegan, a Mexican Muslim. What I'm passing to you right now is a copy for each Alderman and the mayor of a ceasefire resolution, which I, we've been coming here for a while now, and I always like to sit and think about, you know, every word that I'm going to tell you, but I have a lot of grief, and it's really hard to sit here every two weeks and think about how I can move you, to connect with your soul, to literally just acknowledge that there is a genocide happening right now. Some of you aren't even looking at me while I'm talking about it, while I'm talking about the loss of life. And I'm giving you a tool right here, a very tangible tool that you guys can use to hopefully pass a ceasefire resolution and not be a bystander anymore. Alderman Guzman, at the end of, you know, the last council meeting, you were talking about the issue of businesses littering, and in that you said, if you are not a part of the solution, then you are a part of the problem. And that is exactly what we're saying here. There is a genocide ongoing right now. There are kids dying every single day, and I don't even know if you guys are in touch enough with your souls to have cried over that, to have grieved over that, and I cry over that. And I, you know, I'm a recent convert. I didn't have a relationship with God for a long time, and I pray five times a day now. I try to, and every single time that I pray lately, I pray that you guys open your hearts enough to understand that you have the ability to do something. And that's the depth of how deep this goes, that I, in my most intimate and vulnerable moments with my Creator, I beg that you guys understand where we're coming from. I beg that you guys see that there is life that's being lost every single minute, that you're not doing something. And I know, I know that you sit there and worry about, is this going to affect my reelection campaign? Is this going to anger people? Is this the popular opinion? I'm coming to you as a human. My politics are influenced by my love for people, my love for myself, and truthfully, you guys don't even have love for yourself if you can't see how your oppression is intertwined with that of Palestinians. We have no humanity here if we can sit here while there's a genocide going on and say that that's okay and be and have. Some of you don't even address the constituents that come here and say something. In your Alderpeople time, you don't even respond to that. You know, some of you do, you give a half-assed, "I want peace and love for everyone." That's a great start, but if that's not followed by action, that's meaningless. And some of you don't even give the bare minimum of that, of being able to see me face-to-face, I'm looking in your eyes, and I'm telling you that we're grieving. I'm not even Palestinian, but I'm a human, and I can see that there is an immense amount of grief right now, and you guys can't even give your community members who are Palestinian, who are Arab, who are Muslim, the time of your day to acknowledge that. And so I've given you this tool. Please read it. Please look at it. Please respond to us. Ask us questions. We can have a dialogue about it. I'm tired, and we're all tired, so please do something with your power. Thank you.
Thank you. Fakwa Khan. I'm going to do Fakwa Khan. Fakwa Khan. Fakwa. Fakwa Khan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You're next, though.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Fakwa Khan, and I'm a landlord in Waukegan. My business is in the fifth ward, and I reside in the seventh ward. As I look around in our community, more and more Airbnbs are cropping up, and many more on the horizon. I don't know if they are hotels, rooming houses, or bed and breakfast. Actually, I would like to ask the city council, how are they designated? Whatever they are, they have an undue advantage over me. Apparently, they don't need a business license to operate. There are no inspections of their properties, no city taxes for occupancy. My business license has gone up 300% over the last couple of years. That is unfair. I'm asking the city council to either freeze or abate our double licensing until Airbnbs are treated fairly and equally, as the rest of us landlords are, big and small. We ask for the equal treatment. Thank you. I am done making my statement. I hope to receive any kind of response or questions or anything.
We don't respond. This is audience time, so we do not respond, but some of this will be included in the UDO that we discuss tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Fakwa.
We tax his pay, we tax his play, we even tax his time of day, we tax his shirt and tax his coat, we tax his car and tax his boat, we tax his food, we tax his drink, we tax him good so he can't think, we tax his house, we tax his chair, by taxing his comb, we tax his hair, by taxing his pills, we tax his wealth, by taxes on taxes, we steal his wealth, and when he's sick, we'll tax his bed, tax him till he's good and dead. And then we'll place upon his tomb, taxes drove me to my doom, but after he's gone, we won't relax, we'll steal his kids' homes with an inheritance tax. Source unknown. We will tax, 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 spend, 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 and the voters will reelect us, reelect us, reelect us, because they're too damn dumb to understand. That was Harry Hopkins, who was a former advisor of President Roosevelt. In order to understand the real motives of the ones in power, we must take a look at our history, and I do agree with the rest of the world, Americans don't know their true history. The elections are coming up, and we must register to vote, but when we break apart the word "register," we'll learn that "regis" is Latin for king, registered meaning to submit or more so to surrender title. Register your car, your children, your right to vote, you are surrendering your vote over to the king, and the king will decide for you. I always wondered why some votes kept, why some folks kept saying that our vote doesn't count. Language is beautiful, isn't it? In 1913, a creature from Jekyll Island was born called the Federal Reserve. I suggest you start watching the documentary by G. Edward Griffin on YouTube. Look at your dollar bills, Federal Reserve notes. Just because they have the word "federal" as part of their name doesn't, makes us believe that they are part of the government entity, but they are not. They are a private corporation. These men were smart indeed, using a secret language called legalese or double wordplay. You see, when you study the Uniform Commercial Code Title 15, 1681A, Definitions, Subsection B, it states the term "person" means an individual, partnership, corporation, trust, estate, association, government, or governmental subdivision, or agency, or other agency. But what about a human being? Just because Roosevelt, just like how Roosevelt defined the term "person" when he signed Executive Order 6102, the forbidding of hoarding gold coins, gold bullion, gold certificates in 1933. Tell me, why do these two sound the same? This is an attempt to collect a debt. Anything you say can and will be used for that purpose. You have the right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you in the court of law. What you will come to learn is that the United States, the federal corporation, went bankrupt in 1933 and removed the substance backing the nation's money, replacing it with bankruptcy scripts. Call the Federal Reserve. Lawful money is gold and silver. See in the book Meet Your Straw Man and Whatever You Want to Know, page 45, in 1919, President Woodrow Wilson said, "I am the most unhappy man. I have unwittingly ruined my country."
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Brother Blanks.
Ceasefire resolution and peace to the Palestinian people. In this month, I want to expound and elaborate on the issue of police brutality, lethal and deadly force as it relates to police brutality, and also the issue of gun violence as it relates to the Palestinian people and the Gaza Strip. So if you put a resolution in as it relates to gun violence, when we look at police brutality, excessive and deadly force, what we see in each city is only a micro cause of the larger police force. The military force of every society and every nation, the police force is the military. I think what these people is asking for from you, what I hear when I hear them say that, I hear, mm, civilian officer police accountability. They want some accountability from the police brutality that is going on in their country. Now, we talk about gun violence, and I heard a, I heard a pastor who stood here last week, and he says, "We have issues here at home," and we do. He says, "We need to deal with the violence and the police, we need to deal with the violence and the shootings here." And I agree with that pastor. I couldn't agree with him more, because when I think about the shooting that goes on here, I think about the shooting of young, and the death of young Marcellus Tannett, and the shooting of Tafara Harris. See, we want to deal with selective gun violence, but we don't want to deal with the totality of gun violence. We cannot do selective issues of gun violence. If we're going to deal with gun violence, let's deal with all. Let's deal with it locally, let's deal with it nationally, and let's deal with it on a global level. We cannot talk about we are against gun violence when these people, what they're experiencing, and I don't mean to make small of it when I use the term "gun violence," because what I'm saying right there, they are dealing with gun violence on the largest level. But if you don't want to pass, if you're too scared to pass one resolution, the people right now who are being held hostage, that's a humanity issue, too. When I think about the people here who have been locked up and wrongly convicted, wrongly convicted and held hostage and in the cells, pass a resolution, pass, also pass a resolution to deal with the issue as it relates to the release of the hostages.
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
So do two. If you're scared to do one, do two.
Thank you. The next five.
But give these people what they need, and let's deal with the issues.
The next five will be Clyde Macklemore, Frank Pettis.
Humanity.
Power.
Peace to these people.
Veronica Arsentalis and Mansouz Arushy. It's Clyde Macklemore, Frank Pettis, Dave Power, Veronica Arsentalis, and Mansouz Arushy.
Clyde Macklemore, Black Lives Matter. Last year, I gave the city a Juneteenth flag. I gave it to the Chief of Staff, who is black. Why it ain't up, I don't know. But I need to ask corporate council, what does it mean to have an Alderman censored? Does it mean Alderman can't speak on the floor? Does it mean the mayor won't communicate with the Alderman on city business? As far as Alderman Keith Turner is concerned, the mayor doesn't do that anyway. I googled the word "censored." It says, "Express severe disappointment, disapproval of someone or something." Hell, all y'all need to be censored. I've been coming to the city council for years. I have heard and seen a lot of disapproval stuff. What about when the mayor brought a dog? What about when the mayor brought a dog to the city council meeting? That wasn't handling no city business. Alderman Turner made a mistake, and he apologized for it. Hell, I didn't like it at all, knowing that it was a body part of a young, black queen. And when I spoke to him, he admitted he made a mistake. Perfection is beyond human powers. Any one of you up there with a perfect record, please stand. I watch y'all sit down and pray every city council meeting, and I want to thank the pastor for making them stand up. It's the first time I ever seen that happen. But y'all prayed, and then y'all stand up for the pledge allegiance. In John 8:11 to 12, it said, "Jesus said, 'Let anyone without sin be the first to throw the stone.'" So I asked this council, why y'all wasting our time with a special order to censur a voted alderman? Another form of racism in 2004 version. And I'm not giving Alderman Turner a pass, but beating him up and making mockery of this is not going to change nothing. What should be on the agenda are some policies that these citizens vote, that voted for you want to see. A proclamation to cease fire in Israel and bring the hostages home.
Frank Pettis. Frank Pettis, go ahead.
Okay, Frank Pettis here, Wakegan. I first just wanted to start with thanking the mayor, and I know Alderman Guzman mentioned it last meeting, for updating the permitting process as it pertains to the lake demolition site. I think that's a critical first step, but that is still an ongoing project, right? And we really have to do more to look out for the safety and health of the residents and the surrounding community. To my knowledge, no mention has been made, either by the newspaper or by the council, as to the risks of danger for the residents surrounding that site. And they are very vulnerable, right? I spoke to them, many of them speak no English, right? So they don't even have access to the article that was published. Speaking of protecting vulnerable populations, right? Third meeting in a row, we're here to ask for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza, right? I don't know how many more meetings it's gonna take, but we will be here. I mean, we're not going anywhere, right? When will the city of progress live up to its name? Okay, this is, it's gonna be to a point where it's no longer even controversial, right? Now Biden is pushing for a ceasefire, okay? Headline from the Washington Post today, Biden Ceasefire Plan Tightens Political Squeeze for Netanyahu's Israel, okay? The subline, Benjamin Netanyahu faces calls from hostage families, from the hostages' families themselves, who want an immediate ceasefire deal, while far-right Israeli politicians threaten to shut down the government if one is passed. I don't think we have very many far-right people up here. I know we have some who lean in that direction, but I'd argue that most of y'all are populists, right? You do with what the, what the people, the direction that the people want to go in. It's clear. This is third meeting. We've asked for the same thing, nobody's even put it on the council. So it's, it's not even that controversial anymore. But we will remember, okay? We're asking each one of y'all, at least show some humanity. I don't have more powerful words than I can contribute, man, but think of yourselves first, because what you're sacrificing by staying silent is pretty much everything. Let me see if I forgot anything. I don't think so, man. I just, I'm, I feel like I'm looking out for y'all best interest. I'm looking out for my community's best interest, and let's do what's right. And let's really be the city of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Dave Power?
Hello, my name is David Power. I'm a citizen and resident of Wakegan. I'm an organizer with the Answer Coalition. I am here to ask you guys once again for a ce, to pass a ceasefire resolution, or at least put it on the agenda. But I want to also affirm that I believe in the Palestinian right to resist oppression from a genocidal apartheid settler colonial state. But I want to start out by saying that I am mad that I need to be up here again. I've been watching Israel murder innocent Palestinians with a renewed viciousness since October 7th. In November, I marched with over 300,000 people in Washington DC. This weekend, I will march with more people outside the White House to declare that if Biden doesn't have his own red line when it comes to this genocide, then we will be his red line. You can find a bus to go to DC on the answercoalition.org website. Now, I have spoken twice now at this city council meeting, and yet, none of you have even put a ceasefire proposal on the agenda. Not you, Ann Taylor, not you, Aldo person Bolton, or Guzman, or Martinez, or Felix, or Newsom, or Turner, or Donamworth, or Florian, or Hayes. You have chosen to ignore the people of Wakegan now for over a month. Actually, everybody in this room who supports a ceasefire, please stand up. I would like all of you so-called representatives to look into the faces of every person in this room who you've continued to ignore. You all don't represent the people. Maybe you represent your own twisted ideals. Maybe you represent your own power, maybe you represent your donors, maybe you're just scared. But you should be ashamed. You are being given a chance to stand for justice, and you are failing spectacularly. But you have a chance to succeed, and we'll wait to see if it happens.
Veronica? Veronica?
Good evening, my name is Veronica Arsantalus, and I'm here to speak in support of adopting a ceasefire resolution. There is a humanitarian crisis in occupied Palestine. Since October, one in every 50 Palestinian children has been killed or permanently injured by the Israeli regime. On average, Israel kills or maims 75 children per day. Also every day, 10 children are having one or both legs amputated, most of whom do not have access to anesthesia due to the genocidal blockade. Looking only at the past month, Israel has invaded Rafa in southern Gaza, which they initially promised not to do. Israel also bombed the Jabalya refugee camp in northern Gaza. Entire neighborhoods in Jabalya were wiped out. Hundreds of people were killed, and hundreds more were forced to evacuate the six UNRWA schools that were turned into shelters that have since been destroyed. On May 30th, Israeli forces raided Ramallah, not in the Gaza Strip, in the West Bank, opening fire on civilians and burning down a vegetable market, proving that Palestinians are not safe anywhere until there is a ceasefire. We are all complicit in these atrocities, as long as the United States continues to spend billions of our tax dollars arming Israel and funding genocide. In the words of the late Palestinian poet Mahmoud Darwish, "There are no spectators at Chasm's door, and no one is neutral here. You must choose your part in the end." Well, the majority of Americans have chosen our part. The majority of Americans support a ceasefire. It is now the responsibility of our elected officials to represent and carry out the will of the people, the people who elected them. Millions of lives are at stake, and I firmly believe those lives can be saved by cities across the United States demanding and working towards a permanent ceasefire. That said, I'd also like to remind everyone that the outcome will be the same regardless. Palestine will be free. Every colony that has not yet gained its independence continues to fight for it. As long as there is oppression, there will be people who stand against it. Hasta la victoria siempre, onwards forever until victory. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Munser Kreshi. I'm here, actually, to also push for the acceptance of a ceasefire resolution, or at least to get it on the agenda. I'm gonna read an excerpt from an article called "From South Africa to Palestine, Apartheid Will Fall." All right? So apartheid creates the conditions of resistance, because no group of people would submit permanently to being denied basic human dignity. As resistance grows, an apartheid regime will double down its oppressive measures, which will in turn increase the fervor of the resistance. This is one of the central contradictions of apartheid, and is a very key reason why it fell in South Africa. One of the earliest groups to oppose apartheid in South Africa were the ANC, the Pan-African Congress, and the South African Communist Party in 1950s and early 60s. These groups organized nonviolent campaigns against the past laws and other pillars of the apartheid system. These campaigns were met with harsh repression by the South African government. One such case was the Sharpville massacre in 1960, in which the police opened fire on a crowd of thousands who were peacefully marching. The government's violent repression of the nonviolent protests drove the ANC to create an armed wing of its organization. Forgive me for the pronunciation. Um Konto Wiswese, Spear of the Nation, abbreviated as MK. When speaking on trial in 1964, legendary ANC leader Nelson Mandela explained the motivations behind creating MK. "Any thinking African in this country is driven continuously to conflict between his conscience and the law. Throughout its 50 years of existence, the African National Congress has done everything possible to bring its demands to the attention of successive South African governments, but this government has set the scene for violence by relying exclusively on violence with which the answer our people on their demands. Government violence can only breed counterviolence. Ultimately, if there is no drawing, dawning of sanity on the part of the government, the dispute between the government and the people will be settled by force." The reason I'm bringing this up isn't to be like, we're gonna do something here, right? Necessarily. But to bring context to what's happening in Palestine, and the choices of the people there, and why are they working in the way that they do. Another thing I'd like to bring up is like, the manner in which we see South Africa, like, today, the apartheid regime in the 90s. Myself, I'm not old enough to remember that, right? But like, the struggle of the people, like, the same BDS movement, you know, to divest, to boycott, divest, and sanction, you know, our municipalities, our government, our institutions, our businesses, from South Africa, like, that brought it down. But the same thing is happening between, like, Palestine and, like, the US. We all see where this is going. We all see how history wrote, remember this moment. Just think about that, as you, like, continue to fail us. That's all, I'm gonna yield my time.
Thank you. Thank you. The next five will be, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know what this is. Roses Shapar? Roses Shapar? Is that you? Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't read your hand right. I'm gonna go with the next four. Maria Flores, Jana Ashmay.
Yeah, she don't want to get up. Okay, hi, good evening. I, my heart go to everyone. I came in for the city of Wakegan. I didn't know what was going on here. I'm an advocate for the beautification of Wakegan. I lived in Wakegan for 45 years. I want to know, how can we beautify something if we trying to replace it, but the city wants us to pay for a permit that went cost us $250? Do you know how much a panel for each friend's cost? Between $70 to $145. But I have to give you $250 to fix something that is broken on my property. And then you're gonna tell me it's gonna take four to six weeks, and if I want to expedite it, it's another $100. We cannot have beautification if we don't have unification, okay? Each and every one of y'all up here was elected by the residents of Wakegan, because we trust you. I read things on the internet that y'all talk, y'all in a war. This is not about you guys, it's about the residents. Learn to talk to each other. I don't care what color roses you are, you still a rose. Pink and blue, white, red, you still a rose. Learn to love one another, learn to communicate. Stop fighting for power that you do not have. Nobody has power. Let's love one another. Let's keep the city pretty. But before, we used to put things in a book and give it to people, that when people wanted to do thing, they could go in the cupboard and pull out the city of Wakegan, and we know what's there. Now you telling people go on the internet. The internet always crash. The bank internet crash. We need to use our brains. Make a book again, give it to the city so we know. We trying to fix your place up that we paying all these taxes for. Every time I turn around, they change whoever cutting the grass. Now we have a new company cutting your grass, because it belongs to the city, but you're gonna tell them not to edge it. So if it don't edge, it gonna come out on the sidewalk. So it look like mess. Everybody yard look pretty, but the city part look like a garbage can. Got on North Avenue, we have a lot of senior citizen retire here, and they want to walk. Senior citizen does not walk, they shuffle. But the sidewalks are uneven. And North Avenue, four years ago, when we had that storm and that tree came down, it buckle the sidewalk, it left a hole. It's still there. The city trees, you can't walk because it hanging in your face. Those things have fleed, ticks, and things. Come on, let's do something. Everybody want something, but as a resident of Wakegan for 45 years, I'm paying my taxes, I owning my property, I need you to do something for me. I need you to do something for her, and him, and everybody. Come on, that's why you was elected. It's not about none of you guys. You don't have no power.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Thank you. Maria Flores. Maria Flores? Okay, make sure you just say your names. Go right ahead.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Jana Asma, a Palestinian-American going into my freshman year of college. I am here today to speak about the horrific genocide that is taking place in Gaza, Palestine. I want to first confront, confront the harsh realities of the overall casualties. Every number represents a human life, a family torn apart and a community in mourning. From October 7th to May 28th, there have been a total of at least 34,845 Palestinian civilians murdered, with 14,624 of them being Palestinian childrens. The blockade and restrictions imposed on the region has created a humanitarian catastrophe, leaving countless individuals struggling to access even the most basic necessities of life. But it doesn't stop there. Alongside the threat of starvation, there are countless others who have been severely injured, their bodies bearing the scars of violence and conflict, including over 82,168 Palestinians. Everyday hospitals in Gaza are overwhelmed by the influx of patients in need of urgent medical care, yet only 11 out of 35 hospitals in all of Gaza are even partially functioning. The lack of essential supplies and resources only adds to their suffering, prolonging their pain and delaying their recovery. It is important to know that the IOF, unjustified violence, is not limited to Gaza. Innocent children and civilians among communities in the West Bank, the West Bank where my home is, have been killed. Violence emerging from illegal settlements have also intensified. My own village, with no regards to Hamas, is being bombed for the sake of our tax dollars. Therefore, a ceasefire is much needed. It's important to know that in a world where the oppressed are often criminalized, standing up for their rights becomes, becomes an act of courage. And in a world where the powerful can get away with the most criminal acts, confrontation becomes difficult. In a world where many want to silence our calls for peace and for humanity, our own, our own efforts can feel hopeless. These wrongdoings and injustices have ultimately led to the dire conditions of the people of Gaza that are experiencing as we speak. We are here today as humans to recognize that people like us somewhere else are not and have not been treated as such, for people who now are being eradicated and expelled by an entity of our nation, stand so firmly with. For people who are subject to less rights because of their ethnicity, for people who have been under siege, for people who are being starved, and stripped, and beaten, and zipped tied, and raped, and abused in unimaginable ways. I find it beyond hypocritical that you speak about Men's Health Month, but not giving a damn about our men and brothers being bombed and killed in a country being taxed by our tax dollars. I urge you to call for a ceasefire and end for the suffering of all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next five, I'm gonna call the next five. Jana Ashmay, Asad Judah, Kelly Hajbilo, Jason Farias, and Kathy Charity. Jana Ashmay, Asad Judah, Kelly Hajbilo, Jason Farias, and Kathy Charity. Go right ahead. State your name.
So my name is Asiel Judah. Good evening. I am a 17-year-old Palestinian-American student. I came here to say that I, as a Palestinian, am not disposable. And I wear the scufia, and I vocalize my concerns, because neither my people nor my rights are disposable. I am not just another number in your headlines. I am not just a lump of flesh under the rubble that was my home. I, as a Palestinian, insist on life, as do all of us by the thousands. And although our bloodshed has often gone unnoticed, today we acknowledge their pain. We are all gathered here today for a reason. We are gathered here because the Palestinian, Palestinian right to life does not undermine any other person's right to life. You speak of gun violence and men's mental health, but what about the Palestinian men in Gaza? What about the children in Gaza? What about the children in Gaza who are the very victims of gun violence and so much more? Your tax, your tax dollars that are being sent to kill Palestinians are in conflict with your proclamations. That is why I'm here, to call for a ceasefire. Because we refuse to be complicit in this genocide and abuse that plays out before us. We refuse to sit and watch quietly as people endure tragedies our government has created the capacity for. How many more Palestinians need to be displaced, killed, kidnapped, burned alive, and so much more for us to call for an end to it all? We, the people of Waukegan, Gurnee, Libertyville, and so much more, demand a ceasefire. I stand here before you, asking you to call for a ceasefire, to present, to prevent the loss of more human life. This is a me issue, this is a you issue, a Waukegan issue, and most importantly, an American issue. We need to let the people know of Palestine, know that we see them and that we hear them and that their pain will not go unnoticed in our hearts. We, as your constituents, are asking and demanding that you call for a ceasefire. We are simply asking that you be human. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Go ahead, just state your name. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good evening. I am reading a letter from Brendan Stewart, who was unfortunately unable to stay long enough to read it himself. "Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I stand before you today ashamed to call myself a Waukeganite. Our city offers so much to be proud of. I'm astonished why one alderman is so intent on abusing his office to turn our town into his own personal reality show. We trust our aldermen have our community's interests foremost in their minds. We elect them with the promise that they will advocate for our safety and security and promote Waukegan as a wonderful community in which to live. Alderman Turner has violated every one of these promises. Alderman Turner came upon a crime scene that day on Waukegan Beach when he found the severed arm of murder victim Sade Robinson. He didn't call the police, he didn't call the coroner, he didn't notify any relevant authority. His first thought was not for the victim, not for the family, not for the safety of our residents. His first thought was, I'm running for mayor. How can I make this about me? In so doing, he released a photo of a crime scene publicly, which was unknown to police. Turner likely single-handedly tainted evidence that could be used to convict Sade Robinson's murderer. Now, because of Turner's actions, the murderer may walk free. Turner's actions have, at a minimum, shown his complete lack of foresight, judgment, decency, and respect for the members of our community and the family of Sade Robinson. At worst, he may have put this community in real danger. If he's not held accountable for this, what will he try to get away with next? Members of the City Council, I urge you to vote yes on the resolution to censure Keith Turner. If not for any other reason, I offer you the words of Sade's mother, Sheena Scarborough. I want him held accountable. I want him reprimanded. If you cannot give this family peace, I urge you to give them accountability. Please do what's right. Censure Turner tonight. Thank you."
Thank you. Next. State your name.
Uh, Jason. A month ago, many Waukegan residents came in to speak in favor, uh, to the City Council in favor of passing a ceasefire resolution, and it has been a long month of silence on this issue. A couple of the council, um, members have said that they want the best for the Palestinian people, some said all they want is peace, and that's great, you know, we all want peace, but what your constituents need to see from you is some action. We need to see some movement on this issue. Uh, most on the board can't even tell us if they're in favor or not of, of a resolution, which is honestly more cowardly than just telling us straight. The majority of the board has remained silent on this issue, um, and my question is, where's the transparency? My message, message to the board is that your silence is heard, and your silence is loud. A brother made a great, uh, point a couple weeks ago, that we can pass resolutions for birds, resolutions for buildings, but we can't get one passed for people. When your career is worth more than, uh, when your career is worth more, sorry, what is your career worth when passing a resolution for peace is too costly? A resolution for innocent civilians? A resolution for children burned alive in tents that they have become refugees in? Weeks ago, I handed, uh, I myself handed to council an excellent framework for a resolution from the city of Urbana, um, but I'm assuming many of you barely gave it the time of day. Uh, I hope you all read over Aurora's, uh, framework that she passed out earlier. It's obvious to anyone paying attention that Palestine will be an issue this fall. Palestine will be an issue down the entire ballot. Uh, if you are unaware, 100,000 in Michigan cast uncommitted votes in the past primary. This is the largest movement of uncommitted votes in recent history, and this is because the people know that this coming, upcoming election is gonna be between a convicted felon and a man actively committed, committing crimes against humanity. You can play a role in this, and your silence is complicity. And for those of you running for mayor this year, I want to ask, is your silence on genocide gonna be part of your legacy? Because I know we will not stop, we will not rest, and in November, we will remember.
Thank you. Kathy Charity.
Kathy Charity, Waukegan. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. After residing and graduating from a wonderful suburb of Evanston, Illinois, my then-husband wanted to move to a wonderful city called Waukegan to be closer to his job. 20 years later, that wonderful city became Waukegseko. Today is called What Country, because many illegal people from different countries are here. I now do most of my shopping in different suburbs, because I feel uncomfortable. Many things have changed in this city, and it's no longer feels like it used, the way it used to feel. Sorry to say, but it feels like a third world country. The First Ward needs strength. Sylvia Bolton, I know, I've been knowing you for a long time, and when you put your number out there for us to read, to, to reach you, a lot of times you're out of town, or sometime you don't call. I respect you, but there's times when I need you, you're not around. Okay, crime is on the rise, drugs and speeding cars with booming music is out of control, and dark tenant, tenant windows are one, that was once illegal, are everywhere now. Now, the people that come here demanding results from this City Council, from what's going on in other countries, which I'm very sad about, and I am, I do support ceasefire, and it's very harrowing, but we have issues right here in What Country. Our homeless veterans are all over the world, they're homeless, and they are in desperate need of food, shelter, and help. Last week, a four-year-old got killed here in Waukegan, and last, and a few days ago, a five-year-old got killed in Chicago. This is happening every day, all through the highways and byways, not mentioning many other families that are placed back, on the back burner in order to get substances, um, because of the influx of others. My message to you is to voice your opinion, go down to Springfield, or take it to Washington, DC, to the one who started all this mess in the first place. And by the way, we are the Hebrew Jews. We are from the bloodline of Shem, not Sim, which was re-characterized by the city of Rome. But today's scholars aren't teaching this, because therefore, our people are destroyed from the lack of knowledge. 2024 will be the most powerful election in this history. The American people are watching everything, even our City Council governments, and they will be deciding on who get those seats. I also hope and pray that this city will create more American businesses and make Wa, What Country, Waukegan, great again.
Thank you, ma'am. The last two speakers are Chelsea Felona and Margaret Carrasco. Chelsea Felona and Margaret Carrasco.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Feluna, and I'm here today to demand that the City Council pass the ceasefire resolution to end the suffering in Gaza now. Before last month's meeting, Mayor Taylor said that, quote, "We have enough issues right here, and I have to stay focused on Waukegan." First, the people of Waukegan who this council represents are telling you that they demand a ceasefire resolution. We have made our demands loud and clear, and focusing on Waukegan should mean representing the will of this community. Second, our local conditions here cannot be separated from this country's foreign policy of endless war and destruction. Waukegan is not isolated from the genocide in Palestine. Each tax dollar the US sends in aid to Israel is a dollar that should be spent on our communities, providing housing, food, education, and healthcare. The billion sent each year to supply the bombs exploding in Gaza should be spent on building up communities and not destroying them. Mayor Taylor said, when she works with state or federal elected officials, it's to bring benefits to Waukegan. Then let's bring those benefits to Waukegan by demanding a ceasefire and demanding an end of all US aid to Israel. Over the past eight months, we have witnessed both the incredible perseverance of Palestinian resistance and the massive growth of solidarity with Palestine. In the United States, we are at a tipping point. The majority of young people do not support the Israeli occupation, and instead support Palestinian people's struggle for liberation. The majority of Americans support an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Hundreds of thousands of protesters have filled the streets nationally and locally, demanding a ceasefire and a free Palestine. Speakers at previous City Council meetings have cloaked their support for genocide by describing calls for a ceasefire as anti-Semitic. But let us be clear, Zionism is a racist and colonial ideology. We see Zionists and their cheerleaders in the US use racism to justify war crimes in Palestine, and see an increasing number of attacks on Palestinians and other Arabs in the US, including in Chicago. Zionists falsely claim to speak for all Jewish people, but they do not. They do not speak for me. All people of conscience must demand an immediate ceasefire, an end to the occupation, and a free Palestine.
I just gave a flyer to invite the entire community, including our Palestinian brothers and sisters, to join us 5 o'clock this Thursday at Ophoria Cafe, in which our invited guests are Second Ward Alderman Jose Guzman, Third Ward Alderman Juan Martinez, and Fourth Ward Alderman Felix. Tonight, my words are about the censorship that's on the agenda. I brought with me what everybody was waving, including Mayor Taylor, uh, just this past Memorial Day, an American flag. I may not agree with everything that Keith Turner says, nor do people agree with everything I say, but guess what? It's freedom of speech. And all the Palestinians that come here have the same right to speak as anyone else. It's insulting to tell them that to be here. Uh, let me begin here. Those individuals saying that what, what he posted, uh, well, first of all, the Lake County Coroner has still not yet confirmed that that arm belonged to that girl in Wisconsin, so we don't know, so that's, that's false to say that it is. Um, he did not, get educated, man, he did not violate any laws, any statutes or any ordinance, just freedom of speech. And, did you call that family to tell them about Keith's post? Did your husband call them? Did George Bridges call him? Did your campaign manager call? Because, because of your stupid mouth, again, what's gonna happen here is we're going to result in another lawsuit against the city of Waukegan that we're gonna have to pay. This is just a stupid political game, and we're sick and tired of it. Grow up. You're not in high school anymore, you act like, like, like some high school kid with vengeance. Why don't you instead talk about all the shootings every night in the city of Waukegan? You're silent, cuz you don't care. Aldermen are voting tonight? Please, don't be her lapdog, okay? Or bobblehead. Yes, yes, yes. Use your brain, know what the law is. He did not violate any law. You talked about fining us again for long grass, eight inches tall? How about the city properties that are four feet tall, like a Newman and Fraser, and haven't been cut? Lastly, I got a message about a job.
Thank you, Margaret.
Was that George Bridges applying in Montreuil?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Um, at this time, do the aldermen want to take a break for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, that's, um, um, we will come back in five minutes, so by 8:10, you need to be here, and we'll go on with the rest of the agenda.
We stay. We got to hear this sense.
All right, exactly. Everyone stay.[303.44]
I do want to expand on this as well. Um, I don't agree what, what happened, you know? Um, and, and I understand where the aldermen are coming from, where they want to do a censorship or censure, um, the aldermen. I understand why because as elected officials here, we have process for things. We get information sometimes, but we can't just, th- things are under, under investigation. We need to wait for the all-clear. Like, you know, this is for information we can put out there. Um, and eventually, before we even do, it's already out there. It's in the email. Uh, we share it sometimes. There is a process to things. And I think that, uh, uh, you know, I, I didn't speak to Alderman Turner since, um, but I did sign for it as well, like that I was going to vote for it. But, uh, more than anything, I, you know, that's something that I want to make public. I don't agree in the matter it was done, but I, I think that, um, like Alderman Guzman said, um, he wanted transparency. But at the end of the day, we also have to, um, we need to have our professionalism. You know, we need to understand those duties in, in our process of doing things. So, you know, we have people do things that they regret later and, um, you know, same, you know, I'm pretty sure Alderman Turner will speak on this. Um, but I do want to say that, that's the reason why I signed for it, but, uh, you know, I, I don't think, especially in this, uh, political climate that, uh, you know, I, I would want to move forward with this on my end, but I do definitely want to say that I do disagree, uh, the way it was, uh, done and, uh, my condolences to the family and, you know, the grievance and the pain that it caused, um, from my end, um, from representing the council here. So, that's what I wanted to say on my end.
If, if I can just comment, please?
Sure.
I would just say that, I mean, this is a big message. To me, it's a moral issue, okay? But what I can say is that I'm committed in protecting the privacy of victims both living and deceased by respecting the grieving families of the victims. Today's decision is not to target Alderman Turner. Today's decision is to be a wake-up call for all of us that we need to be more sensitive, more responsible, and accountable for our actions that we do. The family is hurting. They are seeking healing from this tragedy. Let this decision today bring them little sense of comfort in their loss and the many challenges that they have ahead. Um, so I will be voting for it, yes, to censure Mr. Alderman.
Any other statements? Okay.
Um, before, uh, I think Alderman Turner should say something.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Alderman Turner?
Please.
Tonight, we are witnessing yet another episode in a troubling patter, pattern of attacks against me led by Eighth Ward Alderman Lynn Florian and Mayor Ann Taylor. These attacks are not random. They are deliberate and orchestrated to undermine my campaign for transparency as I seek to become the new mayor of Waukegan. In their efforts to maintain power, Mayor Taylor, Alderman Florian, and now others have exploited their official roles to unjustly target and tarnish my reputation. This campaign against me is a direct response to my dedication to becoming the new mayor of Waukegan and my commitment to open governance. The city of Waukegan is wary of such corrupt and unethical behavior from its elected officials, both past and present. These types of attacks further lessen the trust Waukegan's residents and city employees have in this administration. I refuse to engage in such tactics. Rather, I reiterate my pledge, my oath to the residents of Waukegan, an oath that I have never broken, nor will I break it now, especially in these critical times. That oath is that I will stand with and fight for what is proper and correct for the residents of Waukegan. My only intentions are to seek and provide informative transparency to Waukegan, especially when the administration goes to extraordinary lengths to restrict information from our residents. I want to clarify that I have not been charged with any violations of any statutes, ordinances, rules, policies, or regulations. The controversy centers on a post alleged to have been made by me on the Friends of Keith Turner's comit, Campaign Committee's Facebook page. It is important to note that this post was not made in my capacity as alderman, nor did it involve the use of city resources. I am profoundly disturbed that these public officials would misuse their authority in such a manner, attacking my character and fostering a hostile work environment within the city council and through media outlets, all as part of another political stunt to shore up Mayor Taylor's faltering campaign for reelection. This post was, in fact, a part of an on, of ongoing efforts over the past 24 years by the Friends of Keith Turner Campaign Committee and myself to keep the public informed about criminal activities in Waukegan, activities that are often shielded from public, from the public view by Mayor Taylor and her affiliates, especially Lynn Florian. This concerted effort to discredit me began last year when Mayor Taylor, influenced by Alderman Florian, started restricting my access to information and resources. This pattern of harassment has been persistent since my declaration to run for mayor. They have used their positions to launch baseless and harmful attacks on my character, actions that I believe are not only unethical, but also illegal. The actions of the mayor and her associates are reprehensible. I will not engage in such tactics. Rather, I shall remain committed to being transparent and informative to the residents of Waukegan. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, I assure you that despite these challenges, despite the malicious and malevolent actions and statements by Mayor Taylor and her minions, my commitment to you remains unwavering. I will continue to advocate for transparency and integrity in our city's administration, and I will continue fighting to expose the unethical, corrupt, and incompetent practices within the current administration, especially those that Mayor Taylor wishes to keep hidden. To Mayor Taylor and the aldermen who have colluded in this misuse of their, misuse of their official capacities, I engage in, and engage in this political smear campaign, I express my deepest disappointment. Your actions do not reflect the integrity and responsibility owed to the people of Waukegan. Thank you.
Man, why you apologize? That's what I was saying.
Right, that's what I was just saying. Why you need an apology?
Can we just call for?
No apology, no nothing.
Question to order, can we just call for a vote, please?
Um, well, what I will say is, um, whatever your attacks are, your attacks, it's just disappointing to this family that an apology was not brought forth. But I'll just leave it at that. Let's do a roll call, please.
Please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
I vote yes for the family of Shadai Robinson.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
No.
Donaworth.
No.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
All I wanted was an apology for the people of all. Aye.
Ayes have it.
I apologize, man. I, that was just, that was just frustrating. I can't believe.
Okay, it's kind of like, you know, we had more.
What was it? Do you want to do?
Item, second agenda, do I have a first and a second? And Florian is the first, second? All of you.
Can I pull out one, ma'am? Item B.
Item A. Okay. Okay. Um, so, we're hearing, uh, A, C, D, E, and F.
You need to pull out A for.
I'm sorry, we're pulling.
Sorry, for, for, A for E D as well.
Uh, no, not on, this is on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, I'm, I apologize.
So, we are voting on A, C, D, E, and F. Um, do I have a first and a second for the consent agenda for those items?
Do we get a first and a second?
Florian, okay, okay, sorry.
May I ask a question?
Okay, item A, a motion. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just curious, why, I mean, it's a very short agenda. We have, uh, six items under consent agenda and six or seven under new business, but I don't see any of the other, of the many items that we've discussed in previous committee meetings, including committee at hold that the aldermen have asked to be brought forward, like the speed humps and, uh, uh, salary restriction or rehire restriction for retirees and such.
And we will get to those because ultimately, the can, the agenda is done through my office, and we will get to those as soon as we get through the U D O because we can't have staff pulled in so many different directions. Most of these need to go through staff to begin with. And so, we will do one in July, and then we will, that'll be the committee of the whole, but we need to get through the U D O first, okay? So, that has nothing to do with the consent agenda, so going on, um, we, any discussion on the items A, C, D, E, and F? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Martinez.
President.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, um, can I have a first and a second to the motion, and then we'll do discussion? How's that?
So move.
Uh, Alderman Martinez is the first, second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Florian, um, yes.
I just had a couple corrections. Um, under number three, information and discussion, the second paragraph, it says TIF funds for privately projects. I think it should be just private projects.
I have the, uh, minutes in front of me. Item three, second paragraph, which line is it?
The first line.
Asked about location using for private projects. Thank you for catching that, okay?
And then, on the, on, um, item B, um, it, it, where it starts out, Sam Yingling describes how he was talking about the YMCA building and that they asked for 1.8 million in finance, financial assistance from the city, but then the last sentence says, "The developer is requesting $850,000 in financial assistance from the city for the YMCA building," but that really should be 38 North Genesee, that last sentence, because they are asking for 1.8 million for the YMCA building, and then the next sentence is describing 38 Genes, North Genesee.
That's correct. So, you're asking to substitute out the words YMCA building with 38 North Genesee in the last sentence of that first partial paragraph?
Yes, sir, yep.
Got it.
And then, I just need clarification, the, under motion to see Alderman Felix in that big, long paragraph about, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lines down or so, it says, "Mr. Yingling responded that it would require partnership from the city." He was talking about the county parking lot. Did he really say the city, or did he say the county? Because technically, it would be the county. The city wouldn't be making that decision.
I, I believe that Mr. Yingling said that he would need the city's support to.
Okay, okay.
To go to the county. That's how, that was the summary.
All right. And then if you go down to the second thing Alderman Newsom said, she, she asked about parking for renovated buildings. Mr. Yingling stated that, that would want to work with city staff to utilize occupates, they, I, I think that she'd say something like, "They would want to work with city staff to utilize unoccupied spaces." Right, but it just, the, the language is just messy.
I'm try, I'm trying to find specifically, and I realize it is a very large paragraph.
It's kind of right sent, dead center.
Asked about parking for renovated buildings, they would want to work with city staff to.
Well, you said they would want, that they would want to, but anyway, whatever.
They would, that, they would.
To utilize unoccupied.
Work with city staff, and it's not utili, not utilized, it's utilize. Got it.
And then, one last thing, the, the second to last sentence in that paragraph, it says been used, it says ben instead of been used.
Thank you, I've got that.
Sorry.
No, that, that's fine, um, and thank you for those changes. Those were all, um, basically typo changes, so, uh, the city council can either take those changes as they were made and approve these, or we can bring them back, um, with a corrected.
I think we should just take them as we corrected them.
Okay, um, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, there being no reports and communication, all business. Um, item A, um, can I have a first and a second?
Some more.
A second?
Alderman Newsom, second is Alderman Bolton. Um, any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk, yes.
Is this for the salary ordinance, correct?
I'm sorry.
For the salary ordinance?
Yes, this is, I, under seven A.
Okay, so, here's the thing. I've been going back and forth on this and, um, on the whole thing. So, two, uh, two opinions. One, okay, so, this year, we did, uh, balance budget, 238 million, and then we added, uh, it came out to 245 million, so we're bringing it in 238. We covered the $6 million with other, uh, other money. Alderman Bolton wanted to, um, appropriation, whatever comes in, that's what goes out. Um, so, easy mathematics, what do you think happens next year if we don't raise property taxes? The same amount of money comes in, guess what? What goes out? It's, if we keep giving these raises, give, keep giving, getting, uh, director appointments, and keeps going higher and higher and higher, so, what's going to happen? Your property taxes are going to have to go up because 238 million is no longer enough. So, it's no longer a 245 million, it's no longer a $6 million deficit. Now, you're at 12 or 15 million dollars. Now, where you're going to come up if you don't raise those property taxes? So, if you keep on giving raises over and over and over and over again, guess what happens? Sooner or later, the piper's going to come collect, and you're going to have to raise property taxes. And I'm surprised Alderman Bolton is in favor of this because this is what's going to happen next year.
Okay, um, that's, you, are you talking director spots, or, because this?
Uh, whichever, I mean, because if you keep giving raises, so it's 238 million dollars we're budgeting for all, uh, for all money being spent this year. Next year, what do you think is going to be, uh, the budget if we don't raise property taxes? So, if we don't raise property taxes and, and economics shows that, uh, properties don't increase, we're going to bring in the same amount of money, 238 million dollars. So, what does that mean? So, $6 million we had to find, uh, to, to balance this budget, what do you think it's going to be next year? 10 million, 11 million, 12 million to cover? So, if we don't have the money to cover it, that money, where do you think is going to come from? Now, they're going to come and asking for, uh, property tax increase to, to come up with that money. So, really think about it before you keep giving raises and keep giving out money like it's free. It is not free.
Um, I know, okay, I, one Alderman asked to call the vote. What I will say is that, that's going, I mean, no one has put out raising property taxes, so let me just talk about that, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I never said that.
I mean, there's other ways that we can do that. Alderman Felix?
Uh, can, uh, can we get the details as, as to what this is? Because it's, um, not just the city clerk, it's the mayor and the treasurer. Um, Chief Bridges, you think you can explain what, what this is?
Didn't you go over this in automatic briefings?
Uh, of course, yes, yes, yes. We all had our alderman briefings, but I would like for the details to be explained, if that's okay?
Um, corporate counsel will address it.
Okay.
So, this has gone, this has been kind of a saga. This ordinance has had a lot of different forms. The one that is currently in place holds the annual salary for the citywide elected officials, which is the mayor, the city clerk, and the treasurer, at the same rate as they are currently for the next term. Under Illinois law, you cannot change a, a elected official's salary while they're serving. Um, the idea is that people shouldn't be able to give themselves a raise while they're serving, and it only would apply in the next term. And you also can't, uh, change it within 150 days, um, uh, before the next election because the idea is that you don't want people, um, if they, they don't want to cut their successors' pay either. So, right now, what's on the books is that starting in 2025, which would be the year that the next citywide election would be for mayor, city clerk, and treasurer, that there would be no increase in the base salary, and there would be no annual increase. Alderman Newsom has proposed an amendment to that, which is the ordinance that is before us today. That amendment would raise the base salary of the mayor from 118,00502 to 136,277. The city clerk's salary, which is currently 80,720, would be raised to 94,000 and would increase 2% a year thereafter. The treasurer's salary, which is currently 22,000, would be raised to 26,000. So, once again, the changes are to the base salary and adding a 2% increase each year, which are currently not in the salary ordinance. Um, is that a, is that an adequate summary for you? Okay, thanks.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
I'm abstaining my vote.
Pardon me?
I'm abstaining my vote.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Nay.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
No.
Motion passed. Onto new business. Um, I'm thinking of doing an omnibus, but we'll pull out item A. Is everybody okay with an omnibus for items B through F?
If I can make, if I can make one clarification on that, Mayor?
Sure.
So, as we noted in committee, there was a, uh, there was an ordinance that adds one position to the salary ordinance, and that's all it does. It adds the construction manager position in Public Works. It also says that it adjusts position titles. That is incorrect. It adjusts department designations. So, it does not create any new positions, it does not accept for the construction manager, and it does not change anyone's position title, it just clarified what department they're in. So, that, that was just one clarification that I made. I provided that, uh, that change to the clerk, uh, but that's just for everyone's edification.
Um, so can I have a first to omnibus, items B through F? Alderman Newsom, second?
Second.
Alderman Turner. Okay. Um, item B, a resolution approving an intergovernment agreement with the regional transfer, transit authority for the access to transit grant award, um, that was heard tonight at the Community Development Committee. Item C, a resolution approving a contract with Five Star Energy Services, um, for, um, the 25 S R F funded lead services line replacements in an amount not to exceed $3,689,814. Item D, a resolution approving a change order with Lab Construction, Inc., for the Police Department lower-level entrance remodeling for an amount not to exceed $32,710. Item E, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workman's compensation claim 220601W004 for an amount not to exceed $70,423.81. Item F, an ordinance amending, ordinance 24080 fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the city of Waukegan, Illinois to provide for the salary of Public Works Construction Manager and adjust position, a title, but, uh, I mentioned, yeah. Okay, so did you hear the last part? Instead of position titles, it's department designations. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Nay.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, closing time, Alderman time. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, I'm sorry. Item A, an ordinance, um, can I have a motion for item A?
Motion.
Okay, Alderman Turner in a second.
Second.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
And this is an ordinance creating a classy restaurant liquor license and associated video gaming license for Lucky Scotties located at 30 North Genesee Street. Um, any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we talked about this in committee, and I knew I had a question, and I couldn't remember what it was, and, um, I had told them after the committee, um, they put in their application that they were talking about having live music, and I know that we've had issues with that in other places, so I wanted to make sure they clarified with Noel what they were allowed to have and what they weren't allowed to have. So, did, did that get taken care of?
Yes, so we, so, yes. Hello, hello, uh, council meeting members. So, yes, I did talk, uh, and what they said is we have to go to ITSL, to licensing department, and we're not looking for anything club or anything, we're just looking for like a jazz or.
We've heard that line before, I'm going to tell you.
No, no.
That's why we're careful about it.
I understand, I understand. It's just going to be like, uh, blues or jazz live bands every Saturday if possible, but I know you advised to go to the licensing department and see if, if we can get that added on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, going on to item 10, Alderman time. Alderman Martinez.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk and Counsel, I'll be brief here. Uh, first, I'd like to say that, uh, we will be having our Tiffany Drive Neighborhood Watch Meeting. This meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 18th, from 6:00 to 7:00 P. M. It will be at a residence at 528 Tiffany Drive. It is open to all residents seeking information, establishing their very own, uh, Neighborhood Watch Program. Uh, it would be hosted by myself and my neighborhood, uh, policing officer, Officer Luca, so I do encourage everyone to try to get there. I will be putting flyers out, I will be putting these on the mailboxes, they will also be located in businesses around my ward. So, again, um, I encourage everyone to, you know, we, we, we want better neighborhoods, and we, we put so much emphasis on a police, well, they can't do it all. You have to know who your neighbors are, and this is a great way of, of, of getting, getting that started, so, um, hopefully, I'll get a, a good turnout, but, uh, I encourage everyone to take advantage of that. I'm also planning our, our weekend ward garbage collection. This is a, uh, uh, where you can throw your articles away, these are bigger, bigger, uh, articles, uh, it'll be a dumpster. Uh, I am working with, with Mr. Motley, and I'll also be, we're talking to Director, uh, Chris Garland, um, so, right now, it is in the staging plans, but I, I am hoping that it would be the last Saturday, which is the 29th of June, and it'll be located at the, um, the Whitefield. Um, I will get more information, uh, as soon as I get that, and I'd be more than happy to, uh, like, to share that information, but I encourage all my resident, every resident to take advantage of that, uh, and it will be on a Saturday. It will be standard hours, be maybe seven to three, or something close to that. With that being said, I also want to let my constituents know, please, cut your grass. I mean, anything over eight inches is ridiculous. I know there's many circumstances behind that where people, you know, whether it be senior citizens, or they're waiting for an organization to cut their grass, but please be responsible, cut your grass. If you're just doing it because you don't want, you, you're not doing it because you're just being deliberate, then, you know, code enforcement will be out there, but, uh, if you are having problems and you need someone to cut your grass, and you can use a helping hand, please give me a call. My number's 847-390-2689. My number's eight-four-seven-three-nine-zero-two-six-eight-nine. With that being said, I also wanna say that I attended the Memorial Day Parade. It was, it was wonderful, a lot of poignant speakers. With that being said, I really have nothing else to say, but I wish everybody luck. I just ask my constituents, please be safe, be mindful, and let's all be good neighbors. Thank you, have a great night.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. Few things. Over the past two weeks, I've attended a few events. I went to the Family First Center. They took homeless kids, kids that are, haven't really been out to any kind of event. We, we took them out, I volunteered. We took them out to the Sky Game with the Family First Center. Rachel, she was here today, she's partnering up with Pats, the, you know, for the homeless shelter that's coming up. So, they're a really good organization, so, you know, kudos to that event. It was a great event. And you can check up their Facebook, all the things that they're doing, sign up for their email list. They do a lot of events to give back to the kids and families. Happy Pride Month for those. I attended the parade. It was, you know, we had a good, good turnout. It was raining, and people still marched. I marched along with the mayor, and, you know, we still walked across for the parade. So, it was, it was a good event. I did attend a North Chicago First Ward meeting, just to give perspective on how they work, what are the concerns there as well, and, you know, similar concerns to, to Waukegan. There's a lot of things that, that, wanted to see how they work and how do they handle issues. And so, you know, Alderman Michael Jackson had a First Ward meeting. It was a good meeting, very informative, and I got to see how the mayor interacts with the Chief of Staff, with the other Aldermen, and it's a good cohesive environment over there. So, it was a good event. I invite our Aldermen to also see what's going on with our neighbors as well, and how we can implement different strategies in, in other cities that work, not all of them, but certain ones that work implemented in our city. I did talk to Stu, oh, he's gone. I talked to us, our legal counsel about the audience time, which he said that we are, have something in the, in the working in July. I told him that originally, last council meeting is that for people that need translation, I think there should be a lot more time. So, that's something we're working towards, I'm following up, for sure. It is that time where grass is growing, and there's a lot of complaints. Some people are not responsible for their yards, for their property, and the city can't just go invade their property and, and make them do something. There's a process. We do give them citations. I'm dealing with a few residents currently that, neighbors that are being affected by, you know, people that are hoarding things in the back, not cutting the yards, trash is not being taken out. It gets to a point where it gets to be a hazard, so, environmental hazard. So, as residents, what you guys can do, keep putting, keep reaching out to your Aldermen. We will let the Chief of Staff know, Chief of Staff will know, let compliance know, you know, it is a process, but we can definitely, you know, give them citations until they take care of their, those things. Because who wants to live in, in a neighborhood where people are not being responsible? I think that it's, it's a good, reach out to your Aldermen. Crime, crime in our city, it needs to be talked about. We don't support crime, you know, there, we need, it needs to be talked about, we need to take care of it in our city. It, you know, with the summer coming up, we need to make sure we embrace ourselves to make sure, let people know, let your neighbors know, let families know that crime is not okay, and we need to obey the law, you know, we need to live in a safe environment where we can walk, you know. Sometimes I see people walking, and it feels great to see people walking in our neighborhood, but at times, it's, it's not so easy because, you know, because of the crime that you hear. So, you know, as neighbors, like Alderman Martinez says, let's all be good neighbors, let the, let your city know, the police know, let us know, Aldermen, where are some hot spot areas, some things that you guys are seeing that is potential for, for a crime or danger. We will definitely let the Chief of Police know, or Chief of Staff know. That's pretty much it for me. Another thing that I do wanna bring up, that I'm gonna bring up to the, to the Chief of Staff, or whoever is, as one of our residents brought up, is that we need to have more education on the safety measures our residents can have on this ongoing demolition. We need to make sure that, you know, we talk about partnership with the Lake County, or whoever's in charge of environmental issues, Alderman Hayes, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, I think this is the second time it's been brought up, what can our residents do to protect themselves for potential hazardous materials in the air? I think that our residents need more communication with that. So, maybe we can work on that together, or, you know, talk to our, our team here. That's, just double check here. That's pretty much it. Thank you, guys.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just two items. I was following behind the LRS truck briefly in my ward this week, and I noticed the difficulty that they have in picking up some, some of the garbage cans on the street due to cars parked too close to the garbage cans. And they have to come in diagonally to try to get your garbage can, and then if they're not able to put it back like it was on the curb, then people are upset. So, be mindful when it's your garbage day. Please, don't park your cars near the garbage cans so that they can pick up the garbage easily, pull up and pick it up and drop your can off back on your curb. The other item is, last Friday, I had the YCC youth, I had about nine youth, young men in the ward, in my alleys, Fifth Ward alleys, cleaning up, and they did an awesome job. And I just wanted to thank the person that in charge with them, Mr. Beal from YCC. He always does an excellent job. We always get youth that are ready to work, ready to clean up, and I appreciate their help in the ward. Hopefully, I can get them back again and maybe doing something else a little different in the ward, maybe picking up some trash, I don't know. But, anyway, if they're available another weekend, maybe during the summer, or another week, day, I should say, during the summer, I'd like to have them back in the Fifth Ward. I think a few alleys, they were not able to have time to get, so hopefully, we can get them back over. And Mr. Chris, I appreciate your assistance, Mr. Eddie, and could you let Mr. Walt know that he was in charge of the youth out there during the work? So, could you let him know that I appreciate his assistance? Thank you all so much.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Firstly, I have to comment the letter that was read by Kelly Beal on behalf of Brendan Stewart. Everything in that letter was an absolute fabrication, a total lie. And now, this matter of censorship is behind us. I hope we can get back to the business of the city, because I gotta tell you, throughout the city, First Ward, Second Ward, Third Ward, Fifth Ward, Sixth Ward, Seventh Ward, Eighth Ward, Ninth Ward, there are any number of issues that need, that impact directly how we live. I mean, we've got loud music calls, we've got shots fired, two-shot fire calls in the Sixth Ward in the last couple of weeks, and two rollover accidents in the Sixth Ward from reckless driving in the last two weeks. That's what I know of. I know that there are a plethora of graffiti and weeds growing out of the sidewalk in the First Ward, there's speeding cars, people calling me from all over the city complaining about the same thing, so it's not particular to any one ward, but yet, we lend our focus to censorship for something posted on Facebook. I hope this is over, and if not, then you just continue. I'm sure it's not, but anyway, stop. Okay, so, in the Sixth Ward, I just wanna thank everyone for their participation in coming out to the Memorial Day Parade. It's a very important holiday for me, and it's not National Barbecue Day, and I take it very seriously, and would thank everyone who participated and came out to, cheering at the ceremony. We have the number of events coming up in the, over the summer. Next one is the Independence Day Parade on Sunday, June thirtieth. I don't know why we celebrate Fourth of July on the June thirtieth, but that's weird. And then, followed by Scoop in Waukegan, that's one of my favorites, and I'm not sure when the, the air show is coming. Do you have a date? No air show this year?
Air show, they're not doing it anymore.
Darn it. Anyway, I hope you folks enjoy the summer, enjoy the festivities around, in and around Waukegan. Let's get out there, and remember, hurt no one, help someone, have some fun. Thank you.
Alderman Donaworth.
Thank you, yes. I wanted to, you know, thank everybody in my ward for, you know, getting a hold of me with whatever they need, and I deal with staff in the city every day, and they're always responsive, everything gets done, and you just, you just need to keep your eyes open, because, you know, these people stealing these catalytic converters, I mean, you know, this is crazy. They're shooting these people and stuff. Like they said, just, if you see something, just don't, don't attempt to do anything about it, just go out or stay inside and, and stay safe and call the police, because we don't need it. They steal a three-hundred-dollar catalytic converter, they're gonna catch them anyways, because I don't know how many times when I was working, they would have, they would catch the guy with, you know, forty of these catalytic converters in his car, and just let the insurance take care of it and, and, and stay safe. I was at the Memorial Day Parade, and it was, it was excellent, a great way to remember our fallen, and I was there with the other Alderman here, Alderman Turner.
Horseback.
Horse, oh, on horseback, yes, he was. And, and we had a great turnout there, a lot of people, and basically, yeah, the city grass thing in my ward on Yeoman, like they said, yeah, this thing's about twelve inches tall, it's a whole, it's a whole field, you know, they say, you know, you can't ride motorized ATVs out there, but I don't think you'd lose them if you rode them in the grass that's out there. But, you know, just, hey, city of Waukegan, please, get your stuff done, mow your grass, then come around and talk to other people about giving tickets on grass. And I mean, please, if you're gonna go eight inches, I mean, come on, make sure it's eight inches, not just a dandelion, because that doesn't count, and that's wrong. And if you have to be around Yeoman, go take a look, you'll see what it looks like when it's nice and green and nice and tall. And other than, other than that, stay safe. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I was grateful to be able to participate in the Memorial Day Parade and ceremony. It's a special day for my family. I'm a Gold Star family member. I lost my nephew in Iraq in two thousand and six, so Memorial Day is really Memorial Day for my family, and it's important to me that the city takes time to recognize that for all of the Gold Star family members. I also participated in the Pride Parade. It was quite rainy for the mayor and Alderman Felix and I, but we marched all the way down Sheridan Road and waved to the people that were out. In the, the weather, it's sad that the weather didn't cooperate that day, but it was still a fun event, and I hope they'll do it again next year, and maybe the weather will be a little bit better. I've been doing some reading about lead pipes. I see Diane already left, but I came across some statistics that I thought were interesting that removing lead pipes nationwide will save eight billion dollars in health benefits, eight billion, two billion in infrastructure costs. The cost-to-benefit ratio is gonna be thirty-five to one, that's humongous. There's not too many government programs that can, can say they have a thirty-five to one cost savings, and I'm grateful that us, our administration, has taken this seriously. The previous administration knew about this, didn't do anything, and we have stepped up and taken this on head-on. Thank you to our engineering department, Public Works, everyone who's making this happen. In the long run, it's obviously gonna pay off big, big time for us, so thank you for that. I wanted to talk just a little bit about transparency that was mentioned earlier, that we all want transparency. Transparency in government context refers to being open and honest, open and honest. It doesn't necessarily mean you tell everybody everything. We deal with information that is private, we deal with information that is under investigation, we deal with a lot of information that cannot be shared. We are told it's to be held privately until circumstances are such that then it can become public. What happened tonight was never personal, it was, it was about the event and what that did to the family. My nephew was blown up by a roadside bomb. I would have been horrified if body parts of his were photographed and put out for the public to see, knowing that this, this family went through a horrible loss, and then pictures were shown before we even knew the context of why that arm washed up on the shore of our beach. That's the problem I have, and this, this has been a pattern. We got our significant incident reports taken away because private information was shared. Yeah. Suicide, why, why does suicide need to be put out to the whole community? Why is that anyone else's business if your child commits suicide in your home? Why is it, why is it anyone's business if your two-month-old stops breathing and, and is rushed to the hospital? Why is that anyone else's business? Why, why does that matter to someone else? That's private information, some of which could be covered by health privacy laws, frankly. Anyway, it's my time, thank you. I, I just want to say that I'm grateful that this, this act was acknowledged and dealt with in the, the one way we have to deal with it, and I appreciate that was done. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Thank you. I wanted to say, with the lead piping project is, is done, and we've done the blacktop in the First Ward, so we can now go down some of the streets without tearing up our car. I'm one of the, have experienced that. And I want to acknowledge Pats, that was out. I've worked with Pats, I've worked with the homeless, and I applaud them for being part of a solution and being proactive. And then, as the decision tonight, I too, I don't, as a part of the Democratic Party and the city of Waukegan, we had nothing to do with what was put out on Facebook, so, and I think all we wanted was just an apology for the families, so my heart goes out to them, and hopefully, you will get that. And then, I want to acknowledge Pastor Brown for being, with, receiving her award from the Police Department for her selfless community service. And then, on June eighth, there will be a brunch collaboration of communities coming together advocating peace, and that event will be at two oh two Genesee from ten to two PM. And then, congratulations to the Men Empowerment Program, Eddie Washington Center, on their graduation that occurred. And then, once again, a Boys and Girls Club will also be doing a event at seven-thirty South Martin Luther King on this Thursday from five to seven-thirty. And then, this Thursday, there will be a faith-based breakfast served to you, come and eat, and we'll be sitting around at our round table, discussing how to be a solution in our community, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening, y'all. I wanna start off with a few things for the ward. I'm doing really good code enforcement going around, I mean, it's just up to here. I've had it with the grass, I've had it with the parking everywhere, anywhere that you wanna park, your landscaping vehicles. I don't wanna hear the calls. You move them or you get ticketed. That is it, period, okay? Because I get multiple, multiple, multiple phone calls over and over and over and over again about your grass, about your cleanliness of your homes. I have multiple jobs, and I get to cut my grass. If not, I have to pay some little kid forty dollars to come cut my grass. I think everybody could do the same thing. Pick up the papers around there, let's have a cleaning ward so it could be done, okay? So, I, I'm gonna keep pushing it, so if you're getting citations, you can come talk to me, and, I mean, they're just gonna stay, and you're just gonna pay for them, period, because the, you have been told, you have been warned, and it has been looked over for long enough. I wanna congratulate the high school grads for 2024. That being said, 2025 is coming around, I mean, 2024 is, uh, school season is coming around in August, and I'm getting multiple complaints. I gotta find out a way to fix the parking issue about these high school kids, and I, I'm one of them. I used to do it when I was in high school. I used to not wanna pay the parking sticker for the high school and just park on a side street like Greta, or, I forgot the, the two other streets that escape my mind right now, but I'm gonna figure out what we're gonna do to fix this issue, maybe a, a parking permits or something for the residents there, and everybody else gets ticketed. So, high school kids, please be mindful, buy your parking tickets, and then park at the school, or find, or, or get a ride or something, but the residents are very much complaining about your parking on their streets, and they have nowhere else to park. Okay, one thing, Chief Bridges, could you come up here for a second, please? Okay, uh, um, one thing, uh, Chief Bridges, could you come up here for a second, please? Uh, sorry to put you on the spot. Corporation Council also. Um, I wanted, uh, put something in there to amend, uh, um, the ordinance for the food trucks. Uh, if we could get this fixed because we're just seeing them everywhere. They're, they're parking in the middle of the streets. They're parking anywhere they want. I, and, uh, if we can just sit down and speak about this, because what I'm looking into doing is instead of, uh, receiving, uh, um, the citation going to the, uh, food truck, it will go to the actual establishment. So, um, if somebody, uh, asks you to come to their, uh, location, like their store or place of business and, and you sell and you don't follow direction and you get citated, that person should be citated. And then, um, I want the, um, the food truck to get maybe a, a, a black checkmark on their list. After three checkmarks or something like that, your permit is gone for the season.
We are already working on this. It's already been part of our discussion. So give us some time to work this out. And, um, but it is something that we're working on. That's one of the reasons that we're, there's so many other issues right now. So we're working through some of these quickly. Um, but that, Council.
Yeah. I mean, I think one of the things you're seeing is that when you allow something like mobile food trucks, um, that are non-traditional businesses, you start seeing them end up in places where you didn't expect them. And, um, so one of the things that we, I think the feedback you're giving is very important. And we're gonna work basically and come back with a revision to the ordinance that addresses these things. Because, um, I, I was telling Chief Bridges that I don't know of a single, uh, community that's happy with how their food truck, um, regulations have actually ended up. So, um, I think that that's, I think especially some of the comments you made about, um, inviting trucks on the private property and them not complying are, would be very useful to put in there.
Can you notify us, like, uh, at least fourth ward downtown, they have a lot of issues too. Can you notify us as, before it comes out so we can work on it?
What I would ask is if you can get all of your comments to, um, Chief of Staff Bridges, we've amended the ordinance twice this spring alone. And I would rather not crack it open that many more times. So.
If you can have them all to us in a few days, because we generally cut off on Friday for the following council meeting. So this Friday will be that cutoff. So any comments you have, please let us know those so that as we're working on this, we can have those comments. But, you know, this is like everything else in life. You, you do something and then somebody else finds a back way to, to make it rougher. So we're gonna probably have to tweak this thing probably in a year from now or whatever. But we're gonna do it soon so that we can tweak it for this summer. But then we're probably gonna find other things that they're gonna try and we're gonna have to tweak this until we get it right. Cause like Corporate Council said, this is not a one-shot deal. All communities are going through this.
And, and that's my point about the whole thing about finding the, the property instead of the act, citating the property instead of citating the, the food truck. Because the food truck could just keep going on and on and on. And then, okay, fine, I'm done. Change, change the corporation name, change the name on their food truck and then move on. So we have to cite the property owner. So you want the food truck there? Okay. You're responsible for it. You're gonna pay the citation. And then eventually everybody else, everywhere, I'm not gonna pay the fine. You got, you can't, you can't park here. Goodbye. But I'll give my comments to Chief Bridges and we can move forward with that. Thank you, Chief. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think, uh, I'm gonna pass a little bit. I think Alderman Felix wants to ask a question. So go ahead.
During, um, regarding the, uh, the lead pipe program, we had Diane here earlier. Was it just about the additional money that we needed? That, that was it? Uh, Chief Bridges?
Today, yes. Um, she will be back at the next Public Works.
Next, next meeting?
Yes, she was just here for that, um, one item.
Oh, okay.
She will be back. Um, we rescheduled her for the next Public Works in Infrastructure to discuss the entire program and some other items that the Alderman had brought up.
Okay. So she was gonna be here today, right?
She was, she was here. She was here.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Cause I, I wanted to put out there, cause I told, uh, resident to come and, and she was gonna come and ask regarding a few questions. So just that way publicly, um, you know, it's known that, you know, we, we were gonna have her here.
Okay. Um, also Willow Road. I don't know if you, uh, second ward has noticed, uh, Willow Road has now cameras and they are being enforced 24-hour surveillance for the dumping and the racing down that street. Uh, I'm looking into having a ward meeting. There's actually gonna be two meetings on this specific, uh, topic on reopening Willow Road. So only for the residents of the second ward that live on Pierceaw, Marshall, um, Ninth, Tenth, Cedar, Carney. And we're gonna do two votes, I mean, two separate discussions on this. And the last third one, we're gonna put a vote if we should open this back up. Okay? Cause I've gotten multiple, multiple complaints on both sides, either opening it up or keeping it closed. We're also working on, I'm, uh, talking to, uh, Chris Garland about the pathway. Uh, since there is no sidewalks on the east or the west side, it was supposed to be six feet, but I understand that the, the walkway, some, some parts of the walkway is only like two feet and people are putting, going on the street. So I wanna see if we could put unilateral, uh, both sides of the streets, uh, four feet so people can walk, cut back branches and cut the, um, the grass there. So, um, people won't have to walk in the street. Okay? And then, um, like I said, again, two meetings, two discussions, and then the third one will be voted. And that's what will happen. And then we will shoot to open or keep it closed. Okay? Um, so that's Willow Road. Second. Okay. So it's, uh, it's time to, I feel our liquor code hasn't been re, uh, revisited in a very, very long time with, um, with, uh, with grocery stores, uh, receiving liquor, uh, liquor permits. And, um, and you go back to that same grocery store that used to be at 80 or 90% groceries and then five or 10% food. And now you go back to the same stores after they get a liquor license. Um, the whole thing looks like a liquor store instead of a grocery store. So, and then there's a few other amendments that need to be done to our liquor code. So I want to put a motion to, uh, start, uh, a three-person panel to start, uh, speaking and see how we can improve our liquor code that hasn't been done in years.
Second.
You need to make a, I mean, this can be discussed in committee of the whole, but I mean, honestly, it, it needs to be tweaked a long way. It's gonna be a long way in discussion unless we get farther down the road of some of the things you're looking for. Um, because it's a big change of what you're talking about. And, you know, it's kinda like just putting out there, I, I, I want this, but there's no definitions to it. We need to define that a little bit more. So I would talk to Corporate Council about that. Um, and one of the best ways to handle that is not to give the liquor licenses unless you feel like they're warranted. Um, that's one way to control.
Well, that's, that's why I want a three-person panel to speak about it, tweak it. And then when it, when it's ready, then we can go into, uh, committee of the whole. And then everything is already done from there. So I figure it's gonna take a few months, two, three months to get this done and then move forward with this.
Okay. You're gonna need to do that. And then it all has to be passed through legal.
Correct.
Because there's a lot of legal things.
Correct. So we could, uh, pick a three-person panel. We'll go what changes need to be done. Because there's so many changes that need to be done to our liquor code and, and not have the same issues what, what two elected officials have been indicted for and, and fix this issue. How it'll never happen again. Right? So, um.
So I, just to clarify, what are you, what are you asking to be done?
Um, I, well, top of my head, that's why I said that we're gonna revise the liquor code.
What, what do you mean by, what do you mean?
Uh, we're gonna do a panel, a three-person panel, I feel. And we're gonna talk about, um, what changes should be done or not be done. And then, um, then go from there and then go into, uh, when then, when everything's done from there, then we go to the committee of the whole discussion. And then we go to, uh, full city council.
When, when you say a, a panel, are you trying to, or do you wanna create like a, a subcommittee that would be looking at this and working with staff? Or are you just saying that you wanna have three Aldermen who are gonna work on this together?
No, we would do, um, we would do a three-person to work it with staff. Because, uh, I think Noel has, has a bunch of good opinions.
Why don't you just ask Juan and Felix or whomever has two other Aldermen and guys get together? We're gonna have to establish a panel. Just get two guys and get it done.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that that's one of the, to Alderman Turner's point is that three Aldermen can meet together. And, um, in fact, three Aldermen is the threshold for bringing changes. And so there's, you know, there's nothing stopping you guys from getting together, working on this and requesting meeting with, um, you know, with staff, depending on availability, but to address things. Um, you know, I, I don't think there needs to be an official designation because there's not gonna be like a budget for this or anything like that. Um, so that's something that you can kind of declare you're going to do and just do it.
Okay. And then, uh, be able to revise the liquor code.
I mean, if it, you can, it would be, you would be proposing an amendment to the liquor code, which is legislation, just like any other provision. Um, it doesn't require public hearings the way a zoning code does. So if you have amendments that you wanna bring, even if they're comprehensive, uh, those, that's something that you can get together and work on. And you can, you know, one of the things we always encourage is that when you have ideas, after they've kind of coalesced into something definite, to meet with staff. And in this case, it would probably be with licensing, with finance, and then also with the mayor, um, as the liquor commissioner. And the only issue that we have there is that three Aldermen can't meet with the mayor. So you'd have to pick two representatives. But aside from that, that's, um, you know, and the reason three Aldermen can't meet with the mayor is because it violates the Open Meetings Act. It would actually be a de facto meeting. Um, there's no, it's not like we don't want them to actually talk. It's just, we can't, they'd have to do that in public.
So you can go ahead and get started on it. And then, you know, like I said, as this progresses, then you need to meet with people because there's definitely legalism part of this. And there's a whole lot that gets, trust me, as a liquor commissioner, I can tell you there's a lot of involvement here. But go ahead and start it.
Okay. Sounds great. One next thing. Um, we were talking the last time, uh, we, uh, for some reason or another, there's, there was no meeting held about, um, alternative parking issue. And it was supposed to be done Friday. So I, I need to set up a meeting.
Yes. Cause you, um, I asked Alderman to put stuff on and I don't think you'd met with staff yet. So as soon as you meet with staff and get that, then we will add it to the agenda. But it's gotta be sorted out with staff first. Meet with, um, Mr. Garland, Director Garland, and he'll help you with that. And, um, then let's, you know, as long as it goes there and goes through legal, then we're fine.
Okay. So tonight, we're gonna.
Get in by Friday.
Tonight, we're gonna set up a date so we could, uh, take care of this. Um, I think that's about it. So have a good night.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Alderman Donahue, second. Alderman Newsom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?